Scott, listen to the pledge.
Sure.
It's nice.
Okay, we're going to get started. Welcome, everybody, to the September ninth, two thousand twenty-four regular city council meeting. I'd like to ask our city clerk to please call the roll.
What? Counselor Long is absent. Counselor McLaughlin?
Present.
Counselor Runyon?
Present.
Randall?
Present.
Counselor Richardson?
Present.
Mayor Mays?
Present. Apparently, Counselor Long is going to be zooming in. She's in Washington, DC on city business, so she'll be zooming in as soon as possible. Okay, item three is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Counselor Scott Randall to please lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is approval of the agenda. I'd like to point out that the executive session that is on the agenda has been canceled. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
A second.
The move was at Counselor Richardson. Counselor Richardson moves and Counselor Randall seconds to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five is the agreement to Jill Poyanga of the City Public Works Department. Oh. Okay, I think we might have to postpone this till next meeting.
Let's just move on.
Okay, all right. We'll be with you in a minute, Jill.
Okay. Wait one minute. We're going to move on the agenda, then we'll come back.
Okay, item six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Up to three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member, who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for a city council consideration. I'd like to point out that item twelve B is a discussion about proposed amendments through our municipal code regarding short-term, short-term transient rental tax, TRT. That discussion was not intended to include discussions about short-term rentals. So if you have something that you'd like to present regarding short-term rentals, that's fair game for our, for our audience participation. If you have, if you wanted to talk about the transient room tax and the allocation of that transient rental tax, that is what item twelve B is for. So having said that, I believe Jan Oldenburg, you're first up. Please come forward, identify yourself and your address, and we'll move on from there.
Here we go. Good evening, all. Can you hear me? Great, thank you.
Why don't you get the mic a little closer to us? Everybody in the back can hear you. There you go.
All right. Oh, my heavens. I'm here just to give you the layout of the short-term rentals in the city. This is based on our licensing of this past year of thirty-eight short-term rentals. So I felt it was interesting for you to know where they are located, even though we have only thirty-eight, which doesn't seem like a big number. It's a question of where they're located, their concentration. And if I can also add, we don't know where long-term rentals are, or let's say that it's very difficult to go through and figure that out. But I am working with Councilman McLaughlin in regards to doing a survey and going to various neighbors in areas where they are concentrated, where the short-term rentals are concentrated, and ask specific questions in regards to their reaction to the rentals, if there are any problems, what they are. So that will give us a little bit more feedback when you make the decision in regards to new ordinances or regulations. I would also like to point out that I don't see any areas where it shows how much of a penalty there would be if they break the rules or regulations. And I feel that this is very important. It's not just a matter of breaking the rules in regards to loudness of parties, or if there are parties, traffic, location of parking, but also what we have had up on Scenic Drive and in my area that residents have pointed out is the way the attitude of the owners and manager of the rentals have treated the residents. And that is something that I think is equally important to know. So thank you, and I look forward to working with Councilman McLaughlin with getting the survey done and that information back to you.
Thank you. We appreciate all the work you've put into this. I'd just like to point out, I think you know that we're currently doing a rather major changes to our transient rental tax, short-term rental ordinance, so.
Yes.
I'll be forthcoming in.
We're looking towards later this year, I think October, November, so.
Yes, and I've read that, but that's why I also brought in the issue of, I didn't see any clause in regards to breaking rules or how that might be penalized, penalized financially, which I think is important.
Well, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, you know, certainly your, your private, private efforts are greatly appreciated, and we, you know, thank you for that input, and I would just ask to keep me in the loop as well, so I can keep our staff who are working on that topic
Yes.
in the loop, so we can make sure we're all pulling together in the same direction.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
It's quick. More than thirty-eight short-term rentals.
I believe we do. The number has, so I believe we, we may have at one time, I believe the last time we spoke about short-term rentals, the number had gone down since we enacted the moratorium. I don't know offhand what those numbers are.
I received this, Jonathan, you may know better, but I received this just several months ago, maybe three months ago.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I believe that historically, we've had, I think last year it was like forty-six, but each January first is a new license here, and sometimes they just, you know, if they don't apply for a license, they're not going to be listed on this list. All of the thirty-eight that are listed here appear to have been issued for the calendar year starting January first, twenty twenty-four. Yeah.
Thank you for that. Did you have a comment? You wanted, why don't you come forward if you want to speak? Why don't you take that up with her? Okay, next on the list is Patrick Urein.
I'm here to talk about the transient room tax. Do you want me to address you now, or do you want me to wait?
Does it have to do with the distribution of the tax of the, yeah, that's item twelve B on the agenda. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council for up to three minutes? Yes, ma'am? Yes.
Hi, I'm Janet Meter. I live at nine one one East Seventh Street. I'd like to know how much money us taxpayers have paid for the Basalt Commons Project.
I mean, I can, I can speak to that on behalf of the Urban Renewal Agency. We do have the Urban Renewal Agency Manager here.
Please.
But the financial incentive package that was entered into between the agency and Basalt Commons was, I believe, approximately one point seven four million dollars. There's some detail to that, but unless the agency manager has anything more to add to that, that was the maximum amount under that incentive program. The bulk of it was through Assistant Development Charge Program, dependent on the total number of houses or units they ultimately build, not to exceed one million dollars.
Wow. Okay, and nobody knows that about it but you, right?
I think that was reported on several times by Columbia Community Connections and other agencies.
And I'd also like to know why the city bought the parking lot, the Sunset Motor Parking Lot?
So one of the driving interests in purchasing that parking lot was to have a public parking lot that would be available to all users in the downtown core, taking into consideration the farm stand grocery store that was going in, the county's purchase of the former Gobi Building, and the development of the Basalt Commons site.
That's what I thought. Okay, and then the last but not least is I, I don't know what the Federal Street project is. I'd like to know that. I know that you've talked about it, but I don't know what it is. I'd like to know.
Well, luckily, it is on the agenda for this evening, so I'll have a whole staff report for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Well, again, this, if you have, yeah, if it's a short-term rental, yeah, come on up.
I'm Paul Peters, three ten West Scenic Drive. So right kind of in the heart of it all. And something that maybe a lot of people never even thought of being in the proximity is people inadvertently pulling into our driveway rather than the short-term rental next door. It's happened only three different times, but, you know, these rentals, sometimes people just assume, you know, you can just walk in the house. We've had people come to the door. They questioned whether I lived there or not when I told them that they were at the wrong place. One I had turned around, another one was actually in the process of unloading their vehicle in the driveway, and I came walking out of my garage, and I walked out and I looked at them, and they looked at me and said, oh, hi, how you doing? I go, I'm fine. How you doing? And they go, good. And they just kept unloading, and they started walking towards the house before the guy stopped and looked at me and said, are we in the wrong place? And I said, yes, you are. And so they chuckled and loaded their car back up and left. But that could be a very dangerous situation, just to walk into a home. And it wouldn't surprise me to have that happen. So just another concern regarding short-term rentals. And that don't have live-in hosts. It's a big deal. So just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Last call? Okay, that concludes item six on the agenda. We'll move on to item seven, which is the city manager's report.
So a few items for you this evening. We, even though sometimes people say it, we, we do not take the month of August off, and so there was a lot of work to be done over the month of August. But I'll try and keep this short. The first one out of the gate is I applied for a position on the Oregon City County Managers Association Board of Directors. And pending the final slate this fall, I will be recommended to take a two-year position on that board, so I'm really excited to join that. That's been a great organization to be a part of and developing my career and supporting other city managers in the region, so that was exciting for me at the very least. Based on some of the conversation and feedback we've heard from council, we've begun an effort to form and have formed a communication cross-functional team that will focus on some of the water master plan discussions we've been having, along with strategic investment dollars. They've met a couple times already. I wanted to remind the council that we have several different work sessions coming up on October second for the housing production strategy. The second half of October, we're still aiming for a water master plan work session. We have a goal-setting session with Sarah Singer-Wilson as our facilitator again in early November. And then again, we're looking for a couple different dates out there to confirm for a strategic investment program, but Amy's on, more on point of this than I am. Thank you. Thank you. For the housing production, thank you. I was on KODL last week where we had a very robust discussion about downtown parking and transient room tax. I had an excellent police ride-along with Officer Caminiti, as well as attended the National Night, Night Out. The mayor and I, a few other community citizens and staff, attended a ribbon cutting for a new sculpture down at the Lewis and Clark Park, which was part of the People's Forge Project. Couple years ago, we had an event at Cherry Festival where citizens could come down and actually forge one of the links included in the, the ultimate sculpture. As the mayor mentioned a moment ago, we have our community outreach team delegation in DC where Counselor Long, Counselor Long is, along with several different partner representatives. And then the last item I had is, this is a bit late, but back in late July, the City Public Works Department assisted some of the Moser Fire Response with Water Testing Services in partnership with NCPHD, the Public Health District. And we issued some additional permits for disposal of wastewater for some of the fire camp operations. And so that's some of the efforts we had to support that response. And actually, the final one that I have is we also executed new state office building leases with both OED and DHS. So that was a very laborious and long process, but we all landed in a good spot, and we executed that a couple weeks ago and should be moving forward.
What's the term of those leases, Matthew? Is it a one-year, two-year, five-year?
For the state office building? No, it is longer than that. I'll have to get back to you with the specific.
Longer-term leases.
Longer-term leases.
Thank you.
And that is my report.
Okay, thank you. City council reports will start on my left with Counselor, Counselor Runyon.
Okay, since we did not have actual city council meetings in August, going back to July twenty-third, a city-county joint work session. On August ninth, we had a council work session. Couple of interactions, helping out citizens in the last few weeks for things that are going to be later on our agenda tonight. On September fifth, the State of Oregon Government Ethics Class was in town, and I, along with Scott Randall, Counselor Randall, were there, as well as the mayor. And a couple of upcoming things I'd just like to mention to folks. On Wednesday, the eleventh, is the remembrance of the twenty-third year since nine eleven. And at seven fifteen, they're asking the public to gather there on Weber Street at Station Number One, and we hope to have the Patriot Guard riders there with flag line. The ceremony starts at nine, or seven twenty, seven twenty, and is over at seven thirty-five. So if you have fifteen minutes or so, we'd like to see you there. And then on the twentieth of September, Prisoner of War POW MIA Missing in Action Day is September twentieth. It's a national day of remembrance, and we observe that at the Kelly Viewpoint Memorial at six o'clock on the twentieth of September. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to repeat, but same couple of work sessions, along with other counselors, of course. Traffic Safety Committee in August, several conversations on various things with both staffing constituents and attended a federal street plaza informal discussion.
Counselor Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, repeating the others, the twenty-third of July work session. On the twenty-fifth, I attended a Q, Q Life board meeting. On the sixteenth of August, I had a brief interview with the city's financial auditing, auditing firm. The nineteenth, another work session discussing the water master plan. On the twenty-eighth, I attended the Historic Landmark Commission, and they considered a request by the Oaks Hotel, also known as the Sigmund's Flowers, right over here on the corner of Second Street, for a restoration of the facade and storefront, which is a very ornate building when you look at it closely, and a lot of it's been covered up. So it's kind of exciting to see that storefront restored. Included in that, that's not part of the consideration of the Historic Landmarks Commission, but there'll be four apartments constructed in the upper level, the first, second floor level, so that's of interest. On the fifth, I attended the ethics training, and that's my report.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. On the sixteenth, at seven thirty, I, I attended a Columbia Gorge Community College information briefing on the upcoming bond that will be on the ballot. That same day, I, I had an, let's see. I had an interview with auditor, same as other counselors in that day, to just fill out a, oh, it was about a ten, fifteen-minute interview. I also attended the Airport Commission on the sixteenth at seven, about eight thirty, I guess, and I continued there with a, it was a executive session at the Airport Commission. Let's see, on the twenty-first, I attended Urban Renewal. On about a week ago Saturday, along with our mayor, Mayor Mays, we did Shop with Heroes program where kids, students, meet with firefighters, emergency responders, police, and they accompany them through Fred Meyers to fill a shopping cart with a hundred dollars' worth of items for the kids, and it was well-received, and it, it was a great project. And that's it.
Thank you, Counselor. In addition to the things that have already been mentioned, I did a radio, two radio interviews with Mark Bailey of KACI on July twenty-third and August twenty-seventh. I attended two community outreach team meetings in July and August. I attended an Oregon Arts Commission reception in July. They were in town at the Neon Sign Museum. It was a very nice event. July twenty-seventh, I represented the city, and Counselor McLaughlin was also there at the Columbia River Indian Fisheries Expo at the Readiness Center.
It's true.
July twenty-eighth, I made a presentation to a group of citizens, including Ms. Oldenberg at the neighborhood southwest of Cerros's Park. August sixth, I had a nice meeting with Stephen Davis, who's the manager of the Dals Inn. He informed me that they're going to be going through a big renovation at the Dals Inn downtown, and from what he told me, it's something I think the community should be very excited about. August ninth, KODL Coffee Break interview. Business after hours at Bones Printing. I believe they are celebrating an anniversary of a hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty years. August twentieth, I was at a Sister City Board Meeting at St. Peter's Church. And then on September second, I did an interview with KOINTV in Portland about what's going on in the Dals. So it's been a pretty busy couple of months.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Randall reminded me of an update I wanted to provide from Q Life, if I may have the floor for one moment.
Go ahead.
So two, two updates on Q Life, and this is, should have been very fresh. I don't know why I skipped right over it, but one is that the Q Life Board entered into a voluntary withdrawal agreement with Northern Wasco County PUD to bring them in as another partner or a new partner to the Q Life entity. There's additional work to be done on a revised IGA that will come before council for consideration in the future. But in the interim, we have a strong new partner at the PUD, and today we completed interviews for potential of Q Life's first full-time administrator. And so that's a very exciting step forward for the Q Life organization and will better position it to achieve its mission and vision going forward. So I wanted to provide that update as well.
Right. Okay, item nine is the consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the more important items and issues. Any counselor may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. Tonight, we have four items on the consent agenda. Three of those items are minutes for meetings. The regular city council meeting of July twenty-second, two work sessions, joint, joint meetings with the county commission at the county's building. And also finally, a approval of a resolution denying an appeal, application, and affirming the planning commission's decision to approve a conditional use permit. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
And I'll second. McLaughlin will second.
It's been moved by Counselor Randall and seconded by Counselor McLaughlin to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten A, we're considering an approval of a professional services contract for city records digitization. I believe our city clerk is the staff, wrote the staff report, and will address the council.
Thank you. I also have representatives here from.
Thank you. I also have representatives here from DocuDriven. If you wanted to sit here in case there were questions. Thank you, guys. Good evening. My agenda staff report is on page 70 of your packet. And I am here seeking approval to enter into a contract with, it is Pacific Ally LLC, who does business as DocuDriven, to scan both our historical and current documents here at the city of the Dals. We have documents that date back to the 1800s. Should have brought props for you to see, but we have council minutes. Actually, they're journals from that time and ordinances, resolutions. We have more current records, if current to you means all the way from 1920s to today, that include all of these as well. We have documents in all departments that are used by staff and requested by the public on a daily basis. And this project is working to get these all digitalized. The intention is this is going to improve efficiency for your city employees and make it easier to serve the public more effectively. Also, this project will make sure that our documents are safeguarded against things that may cause damage to them. Currently, as I begin looking through these documents in our basement, I have found some with water damage. Some that look like they've been chewed on by rodents. There, there's possibility of fire. If we lose these documents, we won't have them anymore. They are not anywhere else. There is single copies of these. So we began the process of looking at different companies early on this year. And after reviewing several vendors, we asked three to work with us to complete sample boxes. And during this time, we were both reviewing their proposals, but also looking at the quality of the scans, the turnaround time. We looked at how effective they were with communication. And the city attorney, the IT director, and I looked through these samples and these proposals. And we all determined that our top choice was to go with DocuDriven, who is here with us this evening. I have on page 71, a table that shows comparison of the three companies that we asked to complete these sample boxes. You'll maybe notice the scan quality. DocuDriven had the highest scan quality comparable costs for these. But in addition to that, they were very responsive. Came out to see us a couple of times, gave us great suggestions for how the city could save money on this project. And they were unanimously chosen by the three of us on this team. The council appropriated funds for this project in the 24, 25 fiscal year budget. This was using ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act. And other local governments are using ARPA funds in the same way for projects similar to this. Lane County, Oregon, for example, their municipal court used this to, I think they funded about over $1 million was their project for this. So I am asking tonight that recommending council authorize the city manager to enter into a service agreement with DocuDriven so that we can proceed with this second phase. The adopted budget has $193,027 in line item number 018-2600-00.39-10 for specifically the digitalization project of these records. And this contract is, as you will see on the proposal, not to exceed $162,150.30. So there are adequate funds in the available budget for this. And I'm here to answer questions if you'd like.
Maybe before we get to that, you two gentlemen can introduce yourselves and to the city council and to the.
Hi, my name is Neil Butler. I'm the president of DocuDriven and Pacific Ally.
I'm Matthew Randall and I am the Vice President of Operations at DocuDriven.
You're no relation to Mr. Scott Randall. Okay. Questions for the staff or for the two gentlemen from DocuDriven? Council Randall or Runyon?
Or Randall. You know, I'm just old school. That's all there is to it. I know this is a wave of the future and the things we have to do and so forth, but you know, every day I get emails telling me that, you know, all my documents are going to be lost and if I don't sign up for this and that. What happens to the paper documents that are actually being digitized? Do we keep them somewhere or are they getting shredded or what?
Definitely keep all historic records.
Thank you.
But we'll not get rid of those. And we're required unless approved through the state office to keep any records older than the 1920s. And
Say that again.
The 1920s.
Yeah. What about it?
We are required to keep those unless the Secretary of State allows us to. Yeah. Destroy them.
And I knew the answer to all this, but it's just one of those things I like to get on the record. Where's the paper going? Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Council Randall.
It's mentioned that this will enhance or reduce time resources needed for document retrieval. Would this enable the public to access them on their own? Okay.
Yes, some of the public records documents, we will be placing onto our ORMS database is what we are using. It's also a state recommended platform. We currently have this on our website. It'll just add more information for the public to search on their own, too.
Thanks.
Council Richardson.
That was my question.
Are we going to go back and get all the public records digitized? Or back to a certain year?
Anything that has a requirement to keep 50 years or older is what we are looking at doing.
Okay, but.
Permanent records.
Yeah, but pursuant to what councillor Runyon was asking, if we have something from 1858.
So yes, we will scan those, those documents. You wouldn't be able to do a search within the document as they were handwritten at that time, but anything that is typed can be searched.
I was down there looking at some of those records a while back and there were some interesting things in the city council minutes.
Yes.
Interesting issues. Anybody else? Okay, looking for a motion. Councillor Long has joined us on Zoom. Welcome.
Hello.
Looking for a motion to authorize the city manager to execute this agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to enter a personal services agreement with Pacific Ally LLC, DBA DocuDriven, for scanning services in an amount not to exceed $162,150.30 as presented.
Council Runyon will second.
Moved by councillor Randall and seconded by councillor Runyon to approve the professional services contract with, for city records digitization. Is there any more discussion?
Just one more question. It's probably in the report, but it's slipped my mind. What's the timeframe for doing this work, Amy?
It is on page 80 of your packet. We will be starting with the city clerk, which is city council documents, pretty much. We're hoping to complete that in October. Then we'll move on to the legal department in November. Finance next, planning, airport, public works, which would take us out to April 2025.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. And now the most exciting item we have on the agenda, authorization to purchase a new biosolids truck for the wastewater treatment plant. In the absence of our public works director, our city manager will handle this.
I'll do my darndest. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave Anderson will not be able to join us this evening, and so he asked me to step in on this hot topic. The topic is the purchase of a new biosolids truck for the wastewater treatment plant. These are biosolids that are produced at our wastewater treatment plant and they need to be trucked to different agricultural fields as fertilizer. And they must be hauled out there by wastewater treatment plant staff. Both the city, city staff and our contracted company Jacobs evaluated different options to contract out this service with other companies. But none of those other options proved viable. And so here we are this evening for this procurement. The city owns two biosolid truck tankers. The one we are focusing on to replace is one that was purchased in 2000, was a secondary truck, a 2005 Freightliner that was purchased on an emergency basis in 2019. The treatment plant alongside the community has grown in the production of its biosolids and it is a daily operation that requires two trucks to meet the hauling demands. One of the components of this new truck is that there's a fair amount of off-highway use. And so specifications were developed for a heavier duty truck to better withstand this rough use. And the city staff employed both a Sourcewell purchasing program and Oregon state bid process to procure the quote and bring this item before you this evening. Now, there is some urgency with this as there are expected increasing, increases in the cost of the vehicle ahead of January 2025, which would add about $10,000 in cost. And the adopted budget includes $183,000 in reserve fund, Fund Nine, for the purchase of a new biosolids truck. This is not quite enough, so we'll be looking at using some funds that were allocated to purchase a new 10-yard dump truck for the wastewater collection division. However, this biosolids truck is of more critical urgency and it has a higher priority. This was a, this decision was arrived at in consultation with Jacobs. By delaying the purchase of the new dump truck, there's adequate funds available for this purchase. And so we'll be looking for authorization from council to purchase a new 2025 Peterbilt Model 567 truck from Jackson Group Peterbilt in an amount not to exceed $183,759, along with the purchase and installation of a tank and pumping system from Erickson Tank and Pump in an amount not to exceed $108,890. And with that, I will try to answer any questions that you may have or phone a friend and see if Dave Anderson will pick up.
Okay, any questions for the city manager?
Yes, I do. Is a Jackson Group Peterbilt a local company or out of town?
They are located in Portland.
Okay, and Erickson Tank and Pump?
Erickson Tank and Pump.
That must be for the tank installation.
They are located in Quincy, Washington.
Got it. No, no bid from the local Peterbilt. Do we have one? Or that's Caterpillar?
Well, I think specifically they were working through the Sourcewell purchasing program in the Oregon state bid process to get the most effective price.
That's, all right, that's acceptable.
Anybody else? Anybody like to make a motion?
I can do that. Please.
All right. Mayor Mayes, I move to authorize the purchase of a new 2025 Peterbilt Model 567 truck from Jackson Group Peterbilt in an amount not to exceed $183,759 and the purchase and installation of tank and pumping systems from Erickson Tank and Pump in an amount not to exceed $108,890.
I'll second.
It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin and seconded by councillor Richardson to approve the purchase of the biosolids truck and the related installation. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, thumbs up. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 11A. Consider the establishment of a federal street plaza committee.
Mr. Mayor, there has been interest in the development of a plaza or park concept between first and second on Federal Street. This concept was explored several years ago and would involve closing that road and developing such a plaza or park. And I think about four or five years ago, there were actually some, some renderings made of such a plaza or park development. I think over the years, possibly in due to the COVID-19 pandemic impacts, that project did not move forward. But recently, there's been renewed interest and expressions of support made by council to see this project move forward. I think the potential redevelopment of the Tony's Lot has also brought renewed interest to this concept. And this proposed plaza will serve as a central gathering space, again, complementing the first street, streetscaping project, which we hope and expect to move forward under the Urban Renewal Agency, as well as the Tony's Building redevelopment. And community involvement has been key to this initiative. One of the recent surveys the agency put out gathered public input on the potential uses for the Tony's Lot. And one of those uses was some kind of green space or a community public park or plaza for the Tony sites itself. But given the discussions we've had around the development of a plaza on Federal Street, it seems to be a more a more appropriate use of that development than the Tony's Lot itself. The Tony's Lot will have a request for expressions of interest or process to go through to solicit input from the private community on how to redevelop the Tony's Building. And that allows us to focus on the development of the plaza on Federal Street itself. This project aligns with the city's Vision Action Plan, particularly in the following focus areas around creating economic vitality and strengthening and sustaining community life. And so to advance the development of the plaza, we're recommending the formation of an ad hoc committee. The committee will be tasked with making recommendations to the city council on the project's design, construction and costs. And additionally, the committee will identify and collaborate with city staff on related grant opportunities to support the project's funding and completion. One opportunity here is the city, again, several years ago, was working on a gorge bike hub concept at the Lewis and Clark Park and was successful in securing grants that were later returned because the project did not go forward. The inclusion of the gorge bike hub could be an excellent consideration into this federal street plaza and could open the door for different grants from Cycle Oregon or Travel Oregon. And so that's just one example of what the committee will focus on and explore. As I noted, some of the budget implications are to be determined. You know, one of the outcomes of this committee is to provide us that design and recommendation and a cost estimate. And we could potentially include that in the budget process as early as next year. There's a resolution, number 24-020, establishing the ad hoc committee for the proposed plaza or park on Federal Street that we're looking for you to approve today. It was not included in the packet due to an error, and so it's been distributed in, on the dais here for you this evening and was sent out electronically about 2:00 PM, 3:00 PM this afternoon. And so you'll see the different components of the, of the ad hoc committee on that resolution, as well as Section Four, which lists a whole number of different considerations for the committee to think about and to incorporate in their effort. And the committee itself will comprise seven different positions. And the mayor will appoint, subject to the city council's confirmation. And so that's what we're here this evening. And those members are Steve Light, Kristen Livick, Dan Richardson, Bets Stelzer, Marcus Swift and Benjamin Ring. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on the staff report or resolution itself. Thank you.
I just want to point out that of the, there's four on that committee that are members of the Urban Renewal Agency and the other two are downtown merchants, so. Any questions for the city manager? Okay, we're looking for a motion to establish the committee.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, but also point out to whomever might be interested that we discussed this a bit at our last meeting and there's some notes on page seven of our packet. And we've had informal conversations over the last couple of years in various places on city council and at urban renewal. And I would just encourage us to say yes, put the blessing to this ad hoc committee and let us come back rapidly with some ideas for you to consider and take action on.
Thank you.
And with that, I would move to adopt Resolution Number 24-020, 020, a resolution establishing an ad hoc committee for a proposed plaza or park on Federal Street.
McLaughlin will second.
It's been moved by councillor Richardson and seconded by councillor McLaughlin to establish. It's been moved by Counselor Richardson and seconded by Counselor McLaughlin to establish the committee. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, with that passage, I'll scoop our city clerk a little bit and let everybody know that the first meeting of this ad hoc committee will be this coming Wednesday at 5:30, so we are wasting no time.
Okay, item twelve A. Whoop, item eleven B, consideration of a resolution prescribing the updated city council rules and code of conduct policy. Mr. Kara?
Thank you very much, Mayor Mays, City Council. Um, back for the third time, considering the adoption of the city council rules and code of conduct policy, just a very brief summary of, of uh the meetings that we've had leading up to this point. Uh, at June 2023, council directed staff to commence the process that we are hopefully this evening uh finalizing, connected with the adoption of the resolution number two-four dash zero-two-one to prescribe the new city council rules and code of conduct policy. Uh, in May of 2024, there was an initial discussion um where council uh provided some significant feedback on, on matters that um, well, some matters are, are still here tonight for council to review. Um, at its July meeting, uh two and a half months later, council provided some more feedback, and um, since July, uh council had the month of August on recess, but staff worked at finalizing these rules consistent with some of the direction that we received in July. And so uh there are four points that I wanted to mention that you'll notice um are reflected in the red line that are attached to and make part of our staff report. The, the first is connected with, and it's on page ninety-six of one eighty-eight, it's connected with council's uh direction to staff to remove the word "may" from the last sentence, which would confirm the council president's right to vote on questions before the council, even when the mayor, when there, when that council president is acting as the mayor pro tem for the meeting. Uh, on, next change is on page one oh one, and that is connected with public comment. Council appeared to give us some direction indicating that uh the way that the rules were drafted seemed a little bit um onerous, and there was no intent from the council to prevent members of the public who were late to a meeting uh from speaking at that meeting. And so now the, the rule reads um, com- commentators are still required to sign up, they just have to do so before they speak, not necessarily before the meeting starts. The third of the fourth, or the third of the four main changes is listed on page one oh eight, and uh this is relating to the process um or council participation when councillors receive a complaint or question from the public. That was a holdover from the previous iteration of the rules, and now it has been removed. And finally, on page one-ten, um, the second sentence was revised to uh clarify the time limit a citizen has to submit a letter of response um after receiving notification from the mayor that they have been removed from a subcommittee. And so the final proposed rules uh are attached to this packet in redline form. I just wanted to note that, just to sort of give the, the reader um the opportunity to examine the changes that were made, and the final draft, which would accompany the resolution, uh will of course not be in redline form, but I, I just thought it made more sense to include the redline so everybody can see the changes. And uh aside from that, the rest of the changes are uh just various clerical administrative changes, you know, changing the resolution number, changing the effective date, things of that nature. Um, one or two typos, but nothing substantive other than the four things that I just mentioned. And I, I'm, I think staff would appreciate um council's adoption of resolution number two-four dash zero-two-one as presented, but of course, the city clerk and I are happy to answer, right, Amy? Happy to answer anything you all might have.
Okay, for the fourth time, anybody, we're, this is the fourth time we've been through uh reviewed this document. Any questions or comments? Apparently not. So, we're looking for a motion to approve the final version of the council rules.
Right, Mayor Mays, I move to adopt resolution number twenty-four dash zero-twenty-one as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Counselor McLaughlin and seconded by Counselor Randall to approve the uh resolution prescribing the updated city council rules and code of conduct policy. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and my compliments to our city attorney and city clerk for all the work you guys and patience that you have put in to making this happen.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. I just, if, if it's okay, I just want to mention, with that resolution being adopted, the new rules uh and code of conduct policy will become effective tomorrow, September tenth, and so we will use those at our very next meeting.
So forward and, and um, our next meeting being September?
Two weeks from today.
Weeks from, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, item twelve A is, of the League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities for 2025 and 26.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities ballot allows cities to determine and rank their top five legislative priorities from a list of recommendations that was included in your packet. This is a process that we go through kind of on an annual basis, and will help influence and allow us to have a voice at LOC and their legislative agenda for 25, 26. Uh, each city has this opportunity, and will do so by selecting their top five priorities. The process that we followed in previous years and the one that we followed this time was to have the leadership team review the diff- twenty-three different recommendations, and by consensus, recommend five priorities to guide the city council's discussion. Uh, the city council will make the final decision on which priorities you'd like to submit or have staff submit on behalf of the city. And uh, the League of Oregon Cities uh ballot also allows for written comments, either supportive or critical of any of the listed options, uh but we really need to land on those uh five priorities that we have. And so the leadership team uh went through this process, which involves all the different department heads at the city, and the five that we landed on was infrastructure funding, cybersecurity and privacy, community safety and neighborhood livability, behavioral health enhancements, and the 2025 transportation package. Uh, we'd like to uh, and staff's recommendation is to uh direct staff to submit the, this list of recommended legislative priorities to the League of Oregon Cities. Uh, your alternative is to um rearrange that list, or add some, or take them away. It's your prerogative, of course, and uh we're here to answer any questions you may have. And as I said, the priorities themselves, distributed by the league, were included in your packet.
Any questions for the city manager? Counsel Runyon?
Number three, uh, just a definition, community safety and neighborhood livability, the second part of that, neighborhood livability. What's the definition of that?
Let me.
Depends on where you live, I guess, huh?
Let me find it for you. Hold on one moment.
I have the same, uh, comment on the same one. Thanks for raising that. It's actually, despite its name, uh, a street funding priority.
From the Transportation Committee?
That's what it says. So, I suppose.
Transportation?
Yeah, if you split that, neighborhood livability, just so it includes streets, I guess.
Uh, so the recommendation from the league is to support a strong focus on funding safety improvements on large roads such as highways and arterials that run through all commi- uh communities. This includes direct federal and state dollars towards safety improvements on streets, um, in particular uh, uh, streets that are not owned by ODOT. Increase funding for the Great Streets Program. Um, uh, for those cities that don't qualify for the existing program, they, we encourage ODOT to explore other funding opportunities for cities uh with similar safety needs. Uh, we're looking at the Highway Safety Improvement Program specifically and the All Roads Transportation Safety Program.
Thank you.
Question for staff, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So there's twenty-three possible um things to, or twenty-three things to review, and you had to, you know, boil it down to five. Obviously, that's a, that's a tough order because probably twenty of the twenty-three are worthwhile. Uh, I'm curious, since one of those was lodging tax flexibility, which is something we could really use. Um, if you, if your leadership team looked at that uh and weighed that very heavily, or if that was just, just not really right up there in the top several.
I don't believe lodging tax flexibility was a robust part of the conversation at the leadership team meeting. I don't recall it. Uh, basically, we, you know, what we do is we have each department head, in essence, select their top five, and then we compile them, and then we have just a discussion on the results, and I don't believe that flexibility was listed high there. I know that it is of interest uh from the League of Oregon Cities, in particular with some of the legislation that requires seventy percent of uh certain TRT dollars uh generated from ordinances after 2003 to be spent on tourism services. And uh with many cities across Oregon, you know, with very, very tight budgets, they're looking for that flexibility for their general fund operations and other needs outside of uh tourism promotion and advertising.
Okay, anything else, Counselor?
How many cities are in the league? Like, a couple of hundred, right?
Hundred and forty-one, I think.
So it's not perhaps worth arguing too much over this particular list, uh in that we're a part of a very big conversation.
We're part of a very big conversation, but this is our, this is our voice. This is our, our chance to be involved in influencing their legislative agenda. Um, you know, we are a member of the League of Oregon Cities, and you're absolutely right. Um, the five that we select here tonight, you know, the league will go through its own process to ultimately land on their top five, and we may see all of the ones that we've selected, or frankly, we may see none of them, but it is our chance to have that voice.
That, uh, you're, the subject you've raised, Counselor, has been um suggested, and actually a part of the League of Oregon Cities legislative package many times, and uh maybe with, I'm not sure how serious they are this year about getting it on there, but they have, they have um, they have received no support from the state legislature to do anything with that particular item.
You feel like you would be tilting that windmill a little bit if we, all right? Well, as much as I like a good tilt, let's let that go for right now. I'd re- uh, move to direct staff to submit the leadership team's recommended legislative priorities.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Counsel Richardson and seconded by Counsel Randall to direct staff to submit the legis- these five legislative priorities to the League of Oregon Cities. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item twelve B is a discussion on proposed amendments to the Dallas Municipal Code regarding transient room tax. What I'd like to do is get, uh, have the staff report. I understand that our city manager will lead it off, and then followed by our city attorney, and then uh concluded by our city manager, and then I'd like to have the city council ask the staff questions, not deliberate, just ask the staff questions regarding the um, the recommendations, and then we'll open it up to those who would like to speak to the city council, and then we will deliberate. Okay? And with that, our uh staff report, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. By way of introduction, uh, you have my uh staff report uh co- co-created by our, our city attorney here, uh, which touches upon the TRT ordinance in uh chapter eight-point-zero-four, and also included in your packet is a redline version of that ordinance uh as recommended, along with a clean version for a little bit easier reading. Um, by way of introduction, you know, I wanted to bring up what has kind of prompted uh this discussion and what brought us here this evening. Um, we've been going through a, a three-part process, as I mentioned here in the staff report, that was really uh brought about by um some concern and then resulting discussion, concern from the community and resulting discussion uh with the council around short-term rentals uh resulting in the moratorium that was passed by council this year, and hopefully finished off by some council action and discussion and action in the next few months around short-term rentals themselves. Um, a needed procurement process for the city's uh tourism contract expiring June thirtieth of next year, and uh the process uh to go through that and develop the scope of work. A request for funding support uh from Wasco County for Kramer Field, and in general, um, an over, overwhelmingly a general ordinance review uh for legal sufficiency and process improvement. Uh, this is an ordinance that was written uh several, many years ago, and has been revised a number of times, and uh, so that's uh kind of the four points or four pieces that brought about this discussion around tourism and transient room tax, it's levying and collection and ultimate use. And so as I know, as I mentioned a moment ago, that three-part process really started with a discussion with the council on tourism uh that we did back on June tenth uh 2024. Um, so that's been completed. Tonight, we'll be having our first discussion uh around the ordinance itself, and then a third part or the final uh meeting or meetings in the future around that process for procurement for tourism services, likely through an RFQ or an RFP of some time. And so with that introduction, I'll hand it over to our city attorney to go through the redlines themselves, and then he'll hand it back.
So, thank you, Matthew. I'm, I don't think I'm gonna go through all the red lines unless there's any specific questions about particular verbs, or, or like, you know, the verbiage generally, but I did want to hit on some of the, the key changes that I'm gonna recommend, as Matthew mentioned. The ordinance was initially adopted uh forty-seven years ago, and it's, it's been amended nine times. Um, but there are significant portions that have uh, have not been changed since its initial adoption uh in nineteen seventy-seven. And so um, I went through and redlined this, consistent with um council's visioning statement, some practical considerations, dealing with the day-to-day administration of the ordinance, um in consultation with the finance director, uh, legal sufficiency review, and current best practices consistent with guidance from LOC. Nearly all of the changes are administrative, and I mentioned this in the staff report, but I, I guess I'll mention it here during the presentation, staff is not recommending, and these revisions do not recommend increasing the actual tax rate. Um, as council knows, it is an eight percent uh tax on the transient renting of um, uh, transient renting in the city of the Dals. And so.
That includes the state portion of that, is that correct?
Um, it's an eight percent tax. What do you mean by that?
There is a statewide TRT tax that they charge on top of that.
Yep, that's, that's completely separate. Yeah. So the eight percent is uh just the city tax. The eight percent, by the way, is um, it appears to be, I would say, dead, dead center. If you looked at a um, the state's uh but, collection of city and county TRT taxes, eight percent appears to be right at the fifty percent median. Um, there are some, there are some that go as high as fourteen, almost as high as twenty, I want to say, um, and some that are about as low as five. But uh, the eight percent hasn't been changed in some time, and, and again, these changes have nothing to do with changing the actual tax rate. Um, and so I, I, I wanted to highlight just eight changes for council to consider as we, and, and of course, the red lines are there if anybody has any specific questions. Uh, the first one is just a, a, a naming change. Um, if you look at the, the cases and the, the guides out there that, that address um what we're talking about tonight, everybody refers to it as transient lodging tax, not transient room tax, except for the city of the Dals, it seems. And so we, I know, uh, it's been baked into my head for the last four years. Um, we all call it TRT. Uh, everybody else calls it TLT, and so the first change tonight that I'll be recommending is to change the name to transient lodging, uh, but it's very much the same tax. Um, number two on the list would be removing some um outdated and antiquated terms that, again, the, the initial ordinance, these are holdovers from the initial ordinance adopted in nineteen seventy-seven. It, it seems unduly complicated, and so uh the key focus here, again, keeping in line with those practical considerations, was to um make this a very transparent ordinance, um, so that everybody, that, that goes from the uh, the providers to the operators, to the hosts, to the city staffers, to me, uh, we actually know what we're talking about when we're reading it, and that's consistent with number three on my list, which is sort of making the language a lot simpler. Instead of having transient lodging provider every five lines, it just says provider, and I promise you, it adds up when you're looking at the paper and trying to read it. Number four on the list is removing some outdated project-specific and entity specific mandatory allocations of these funds. Um, project-specific includes some references to the partial retirement of a loan, the construction of the Union Street Underpass Project. That was supposed to be um something that the city, um, you know, um, by ordinance allocated funds to repaying, as well as entity-specific, specifically the ordinance calls out the Northern Wasco County Parks and Recreation District as in uh, as an entity receiving a mandatory allocation annually um from the collection of the city's. from the collection of the city's transient room tax. And the idea behind this was to firstly, to enhance the city's transient room tax fund spending flexibility to the maximum degree, which is certainly in the city's best interests to, and to better align with the city's budget allocation practices generally. I mentioned this and I'll just read this last little portion of number four now. Best practices do not readily support including such specific funding obligations in the city's general ordinances. Frankly, I haven't seen that in any other of the city's ordinances. And if council would like to continue fiscally supporting specific projects or entities, we do that every year. Funding agreements reviewed and approved by the council through the city's budget process is a highly recommended and it's certainly an appropriate approach. The city already implements annually. And at least the city manager and I believe it fairly addresses that need while maintaining optimal fungibility and oversight. Number five of eight is expressly authorizing the city's use of its electronic lean docket, which we use frequently for code violations connected with real property. And we wanted to ensure that we had that tool available to us here. We, we deal with non-payments and things of that nature. And this is just a tool to streamline and to basically save the city some money in recording fees. Number six would be something, again, that's come up in the administration of this code for the last few years. We wanted to enhance the opportunity for refunds to be contemplated by our code. And that's in generally in three different situations. Those involve city, the, the city itself refunding the collectors of the tax for their remit of more than what they should. Or the city directly refunding occupants in certain cases. Or collectors having the authority to refund their occupants in certain cases. And I think this is a great quality of life change. Number seven of eight would be increasing the interest owed from one percent to three percent in situations where the city grants a tax refund, payment extension, or when tax, tax payments are, are late. And this is an administrative change and a quality of life enhancement for finance department staff and myself. When it just adds a little bit more bite to it. And people tend to pay more attention when the penalties are just incrementally increased and one percent seems a little low for all the work that goes into enforcement. And then finally, number eight, and this is referring to changing TDMC eight zero four point one six zero. It currently requires the city to, in its tourism, tourist promotion fund, the ordinance currently requires the city to deposit twenty-one percent of all of the money we collect under that ordinance into that fund. The tourist promotion fund intent there is to use those funds for qualifying tourist-related expenditures under Oregon law. But the city's existing practice is to earmark fifty-five percent of all the money that we collect each year under this ordinance to, to that same promotion of tourism. And so the recommendation here in number eight is to reflect that current practice of fifty-five percent in our ordinance instead of having a minimum of twenty-one percent, just changing it to fifty-five. Tonight, as Matthew mentioned, we're on phase two of this three-phase tourism discussion. We're hoping for council's input on and some direction to proceed with bringing the proposed revisions back as an action item for council's adoption. Our intent here is to, going forward, I think, is to coordinate some transient lodging funding opportunities with some specific entities or some specific proposals and to bring those to council in time as those details develop. And so that's, that's it for my portion on some of the legal changes here. I'm happy to entertain questions on those now or to pass it back to Matthew to bring us on.
Mr. Clebs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of additional points here. Just tail end of last week, I was able to get in touch with one of the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association's members. And we'll actually be getting lunch tomorrow specifically to focus on some of their experience with the minimum or the mandatory expenditure of transient room tax dollars in those particular categories, you know, specifically looking at number eight. ORLA, Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association, was involved in some litigation with the city of Bend, I believe, a number of years ago in regards to that minimum amount. And so I think it'll be very helpful to have a conversation with one of their members to get some additional input. I'll be moving forward with that as this is a discussion item this evening and can hopefully bring back additional detail at the future meeting. I also wanted to note that we have a number of people in the room. We sent out letters to all the short-term rental oper, short-term rental operators and entities that pay TRT in the city to let them know that we are having this discussion this evening and that this is a discussion item on the ordinance itself. This is in addition to letters that we sent to those very same operators when we were having our conversation around tourism to solicit input and feedback and obviously attend this evening for the proceedings tonight. And then the last piece is we also sent out emails to the Wasco County Administrator and the Parks and Rec Director to make sure that they were aware that this would be on the agenda for this evening as well. And just to touch upon again, item number four. And the recommendation to remove those project-specific and entity-specific items from the ordinance is really stemming from my recommendation on a desire to have the ordinance focus on the levying and collection of TRT and not have that specific language around its budget allocation and use. The city has a budget process that we go through annually for all the expenses that the city has, reviewed by the budget committee and the city council itself. And as Jonathan mentioned a moment ago, there's a variety of different funding agreements that we can craft and consider through that process annually, multi-year, and make those decisions through that budget process and have that dialogue and input from the city council and the, the budget committee itself as well. We do this with a variety of other organizations, as you know. We craft various IGAs and contract agreements to capture the partnership and the intent behind each party in that agreement. And so just wanted to highlight those last features there and we would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, again, let's just concentrate on questions for the staff at this point, not, not deliberate. And so I'll open it up to the members of the city council for questions for Mr. Kara or Mr. Clebs. Counselor McGlothlin.
Item seven, a one percent to three percent increase in taxation where the city grants a tax refund payment extension. What are some examples of that?
So that's curious. That's a great question. And I know we're talking about lots of percentages here tonight. Perhaps, I want to be clear, this is not an increase in taxation. This, this is a really modest increase from one percent to three percent only in situations when, so as a transient room tax collector, you know, like Mr. Mayor mentioned, the Dals Inn earlier tonight. Hotels are subject to this tax too, not just short-term rental operators. Well, every month that you operate as a transient room establishment, you're, you owe the tax. And so you collect the tax at the time, the customer pays you as the, as the innkeeper, for example. And you have a month, every month you pay your taxes. Some months, some, some operators are late or they have some billing issue with their CPA and they, you know, something happens. That's fine. And this, the finance director is the administrator of this code. She has the authority to give them an extension. She says, oh, that's okay, you can get, get it to us next week, for example. But the next week turns into two weeks or four weeks or four months. And at some point, the city has the right to increase the percentage, I think, accordingly. And so this one percent to three percent, this is just changing the one percent penalty.
Yeah.
It's a penalty.
I understand. I remember the situation where we had, where a late fee.
Yeah.
And then they came back and we worked it through.
Oh, yeah.
And we gave them an extension, but there was a day of reckoning.
Sure.
And then they were cut off.
Sure.
But they did come in and make the payments, got caught up, so we worked together. So I understand now, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Other questions? Counselor Randall.
So on the, the percentage of the, that goes into the, the tourism promotion fund, fifty-five percent, does that mean that the other forty-five percent does go to specific projects or entities?
No, the, the fifty-five percent is what the city specifically needs to expend under the tourism promotion fund and those tourism services as defined by the state. And so that's promotion and marketing and visitor center and conference center, a whole, a whole host of different things. We covered a fair amount of those as, as defined by the state at the first city council meeting. I can certainly share those definitions again for a little bit more detail. The remaining amount would go into the city's general fund.
Understood. Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, the fifty-five percent is not just money that we've decided to spend on tourism promotion, correct? It's state law. It's one of, part of that fairly complex formula of rules about how we can collectively spend this money.
Correct. It's where the dynamics of some two thousand and three legislation come into play. And is also one of the components for why, in particular, without additional council discussion, there was no recommendation to increase the TLT or TRT. Because post-two thousand and three, the split would be seventy-thirty in that requirement. Add some additional complexity and whatnot. And so just at this stage, we were just looking at the ordinance itself.
So we couldn't dial it up to a ten percent hotel room tax and sort of make everybody happy and, and raise a lot of money for ourselves. It'd be, it's much, it's much more challenging, that much more complex with diminished returns.
And, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, you know, if we were to create an additional two percent TRT or TLT tax, the revenue generated from that seven, that two percent would have to be split seventy percent and thirty percent through the same tourism fund versus what we have grandfathered in now with our existing ordinance at fifty-five and forty-five.
That's exactly right.
I think that's it for now.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, that's it.
I got, I got a few questions. The first one should go to our attorney, because you mentioned, paragraph four is really the crux of the whole thing as far as why we're here tonight. Seven lines down, and you, you just read this. Best practices do not readily support including such specific funding obligations in the city's general ordinances. And then, but you said best practices as related to other cities' ordinances. Did you mean other of this city's ordinances or did you mean other cities in Oregon ordinances? Do you understand my question?
We're, I, I understand your question, I just don't see where I said that.
Okay. Paragraph four. Go down seven lines. So the sentence, best practices.
Yeah, best practices do not support including such specific funding obligations in the city's general ordinances.
Right. But you, when you, when you read that, you, you, you use the phrase best practices as determined by other cities' ordinances.
Nope, I didn't say, did I, I didn't mean to say that.
Okay, what, what exactly did you mean?
I just meant, it's just a, it's a best practices from a legal sufficiency standpoint. If you were to include, like, let's just use this Union Street Underpass project as an example. Here we are, twenty years later, this loan's been repaid, it's still in our code.
Okay.
Right? And so now we're, we're in a position now to change it. Ideally, when you're drafting laws, you don't want to ever change them. That's the goal. I want this to live for a thousand years. Obviously, that's not gonna happen, right? And that's okay. But the intent, I think, that we strive to as attorneys drafting legislation is that it never needs to be changed because it's generally applicable. And so if you sort of hone in on that idea every time you write anything, it has a cumulative effect of resulting in good work product. And so I would never, if I were to write this from scratch, I would never have anything such, so specific because that loan will be paid off one day. And then what?
Okay.
Right? Yeah.
I just wanted to know what you meant by best practices.
Sure.
That's good, good to know. The paragraph goes on to say, and this, and you read this too, I'm just gonna repeat it because it's so important. If council would like to continue fiscally supporting specific projects or entities, funding agreements reviewed and approved by the council through the city's budget process is an appropriate approach. So it is the staff's intent, at least your idea here. I'm looking at the budget for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, and in the budget, there's an item that has the city's transient room tax revenue of a million fifty thousand dollars and change. And then an additional three hundred and sixty-seven thousand and change goes to the Park District. So, under this, you would take the a million fifty thousand dollars and you multiply that by fifty-five percent. And that comes to five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So the idea here would be to take that million dollars, multiply it by fifty-five percent and take that five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars and put it in a special fund. Is that correct?
It's the special fund that would fund tourist promotion activities. There are very limited ways that the city must spend those dollars. A common way that most cities in Oregon use to get that money out of their budget every year is by entering contracts with their local chambers of commerce to, to, to facilitate the promotion of tourism.
And that would be a decision, at least a recommendation by the budget committee and an ultimate decision by the city council as to the disposition of that five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, for example.
Yes, on tourism.
Okay. So we, does it actually say that in the ordinance?
Say what?
Drafted?
Say what?
Does it say that the money shall be deposited in a special fund and?
Yes.
It should be, okay, I missed that.
It's a, it's eight point zero four point one six zero. It's towards the very end. It's on page one seventy-three. Towards the bottom. Part A, tourist promotion fund.
Okay, I saw that.
It's, it's currently in our code already.
I was just gonna say, it's important to note that this fund existed in this ordinance prior.
Right.
It's not something new.
Okay.
And, and so the only difference to this section, aside from some, you know, grammatical stuff, is just the fifty, changing the twenty-one percent to a fifty-five percent, which is, again, the ordinance doesn't say you must deposit twenty-one, it says at least twenty-one. And so now we want to make sure that it's consistent with our, our practices for the past few years. It's gonna be fifty-five percent.
So over forty-seven years, we've increased the percentage from, for all intents and purposes, from twenty-one percent, which was the original percentage, up to fifty-five percent.
Yes.
And we're not sure why all that happened, but it did.
It just happened because the city decided to spend more on tourism in some years than in others.
But, sorry, I want to make sure I have a correct, correctly following this. We cannot decide to, to go back and reduce that amount of money. The state has introduced rules or laws that have a ratcheting effect. Now that we're at fifty-five, we're stuck at fifty-five.
If, my, my legal opinion is, is quite clear on this, yes. We're stuck at fifty-five percent. We're stuck going down, like you can't go any lower. Of course, you know, next year, you got the budget spending a hundred percent of, I wouldn't recommend this. I'm just saying for the point of just the argument, you know, council could spend a hundred percent of the TLT on tourist promotion and then the city would be locked at a hundred percent going forward.
I'm just trying to make the emphasis that the reason it's fifty-five percent in your recommendation is because it's currently fifty-five percent.
That's right.
Wired by law.
Yeah.
Okay. One other thing, just to clarify, as you said, ultimately, it is the city council's decision each year, but what we're really doing is taking away the mandatory payment, put the, into the budget process. So we have a budget committee of citizens and counselors that go through each and every line item. And agencies like the chamber, like Parks and Rec, have that opportunity to bring their case forward and go through the budget process, yea or nay. And then it comes to city council, correct?
Yeah, correct. I would also add to that, that the city enters into IGAs and funding agreements that span multiple years. And so staff uses those agreements and IGAs to craft the budget. And so if we have a five-year commitment to provide X amount of funds to Y agency, we're gonna use that in the budget preparation process to be reviewed by the budget committee and then the city council itself. Many times, those different agreements and IGAs, if you seek to terminate or end that agreement, there's notification periods, requirements and things of that nature, especially with a longer-term agreement like that. And we've gone through that process a couple of different times. And then staff uses council direction in the formation of the budget documents.
I would say for my six years and maybe Tim would agree with his nine or Darcy's nearly that long, that the budget committee's been very favorable to the agencies that come forward and have spoken to the budget committee during the process. So I don't see that changing at all. We've had a good group of citizens and, and counselors that have worked on the budgets for years. And I think we've been a very generous community.
Okay, any other questions for the staff before I turn it over to any public comment? Okay, who would like to speak first before the city council? Please. Mr. Urain, right?
Rain, that is correct.
Rain.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, city manager, city attorney, thank you. My name is Patrick Urain. I am representing the Dallas Little League and the Dallas Junior Baseball Association tonight. We use Kramer Field as our primary location for practices, for games. We run our whole season down at Kramer Field. And, you know, the Dallas Little League's been around for over 70 years. We serve 350 youths across Wasco and Sherman Counties. We have an annual campaign that invests time and money in our facilities to the extent that the league is capable. The, about a year ago, the, the lease agreement between the, the Parks Department and the county, the county, excuse me, the Parks Department elected to no longer renew the lease for the maintenance of Kramer Park, which left the maintenance on the county. Now, the county's done a great job this year of working with the users of Kramer Park to uplift the fields, to make them playable. Now, I want to point in a previous role, I was the District Five Safety Administrator. District Five for Little League is all of Central Oregon, Hood River and the Dells. We are, as a part of that charter, responsible to have a district all-star tournament every five years. Two years ago, I went down to inspect Kramer Field and I told the district, the Dallas Kramer Field is not safe enough to operate that tournament. So we have a really great opportunity to bring Little League, Little League teams into our town for a week. But because of the condition of Kramer Field, I couldn't approve from a safety standpoint for that tournament to be played here. So the point I'm trying to get across is the TRT tax is funded to the maintenance of the Parks Department for the maintenance of the field. Currently, Little League is strongly recommending that the, that the city allocate the appropriate funding so that Kramer Field can be maintained on an annual basis. Now, as I say, allocate the appropriate funding to the county who now maintains the fields. We, we have a great opportunity here. There's been a renaissance down at Kramer Park in the last year. And we believe that there's really great traction to build upon that work that's been done. We want to host a lot of like local tournaments at the field. We have other groups and other users, the local soccer teams, the high school and so forth that are interested in using this park. But we need a funding mechanism for it. And that funding mechanism currently is allocated through TRT to the Northern Wasco Parks Department. And all we're asking for is a portion of that to be allocated back to the county for the maintenance of Kramer Park. Without that funding, we're going to reach a plateau. And we need to go beyond that plateau slightly to be able to make a safe and reliable atmosphere, to be able to make a viable park so that we can not only run our season, but the big thing for Little League and the community is we run tournaments down there. We run baseball tournaments and softball tournaments. And we can't currently do that. And so, again, I'm here representing Little League and the Dallas Junior Baseball Association to support a reallocation of some of the TRT monies to the county for the, for the, the long-term maintenance of Kramer Park.
Any questions for Mr. Urain? I have a couple of questions. Are you, you're representing the Little League?
Yes, sir. I am the umpire in chief and the facilities maintenance quarter for the, a coordinator for the Dallas Little League.
We received a letter from Katie Kelly.
She is the president of the Dallas Little League. She's not able to be here tonight.
Okay. So I had some questions regarding the letter she sent. Are you able to answer those questions?
Probably.
Okay. The council will indulge. In the second paragraph, she mentions the Dallas Little League and other Kramer Field user groups have greatly benefited from the new partnership. What other user groups besides the ones you've mentioned are there, if any?
There's the Babe Ruth Baseball Association, which is for the older teenager, younger teenagers, 13, 14, 15, 16-year-olds. There's the Peak Baseball Camps, which is a summer baseball camp that comes in every year and runs baseball camps for youth in our community. There is, and I forget the exact name of it, but there's a very large soccer camp that happens in the summer down at Kramer Field for, I believe it's a couple of weeks long. And then there's youth soccer. You know, when baseball's not being played, you've got all that green space down there, especially on the Weber side of the complex that youth soccer would like to continue to expand and use in the fall.
Is that where the softball fields are now?
That's where the softball fields are now. The way that the parks configured, the Babe Ruth fence was in disrepair, so it's been taken down. There's a proposal to put a temporary fence that can be moved in and out. Same thing with the softball fields. There's a proposal to do some temporary work there so that during the baseball and softball season, we can run games down at that facility. And during the soccer season, we can remove some of the apparatus we use for baseball and make it an open space for soccer. So that way we're getting two or three seasons worth of use at it.
Okay. And the second, yes.
In addition to those things, Center for Living also hosted an event on Kramer Field for a day. And that's an additional group to use that.
Okay. And the fourth paragraph, second to last paragraph down, you talk about the 2025 tournament season.
Yes.
And your association is going to be the organizing sponsor or host? Host city, I guess is the best way. What about after 2025? Is it, is?
So in the district, in our district charter with the leagues in Central Oregon, this has Bend, Redmond, Sisters, Madras, Prineville, Hood River, Warm Springs and the Dells. That is the district for, we call it District Five and Little League. Little League every year puts the all-star tournament kind of up for bid. Who wants it? Now, as a league, part of our charter says we're supposed to do this every five years. We can do it more often. Quite frankly, there's a lot of those cities that I just mentioned that their facilities just don't lend itself to running this tournament. So by default, Bend has been the big winner, right? We've had it in Bend, we've had it in Redmond, we've had it in Jefferson County. And it just kind of keeps rotating because when it comes to the Dallas turn, we can't step up and say we have a safe, viable facility to play in. So to answer your question, it could come around reasonably every three years at the minimum, probably every five, six years. Now, I want to say supplemental to that, there's the Dallas Junior Baseball Association and other baseball associations that are looking, if Kramer becomes a viable field, I'm going to run two tournaments down there next year. And we're going to run, we're going to pull teams in from Portland to come over for two days and play three or four games of baseball, each team. So when Kramer becomes viable, the planning and strategy around how to use it becomes viable. And when people know that, then the user groups start to pay attention. And that's kind of what's happened with the uplift this year.
This might be a question for the county, but is it, is the county basically giving you the opportunity? And the, just you're going to manage Kramer Field full-time all year?
No, sir. No, sir. Little League, Little League has, we have facilities that we own down there, concession stand and so forth. The, the baseball fields, for instance, we maintain those. But the county owns the property and the facility as a whole. And so it's a collaboration between us and them. But correct me if, correct me if I'm wrong, but Tyler, they own, they are the primary maintenance.
They'll continue to schedule events and?
Well, they'll continue to work with us and trying to, and, and, and the, or the organizations that use the complex for, you know, maintenance and upgrades.
I understand the county has put a significant amount of money into the facility presently or since they've taken it over.
I'd have to have the county ask exactly, or answer exactly what they've done to that.
That will come. I guess my question would, my next question would be better for the county then. Okay.
Sure. Any, anything else?
Not for me.
Right. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak to the council?
Hi, my name is Annette Byers. And I think I've spoken to everybody. The Scott, Dan, Rod and Darcy. And Rachel and I had a meeting with Matthew. So I'm representing the Parks and Rec. I'm a board member on that. And I've also been living here for a couple of years. So first of all, Kramer Field is owned by the county. Parks and Rec took care of that field for 30 years. And we opted to not renew our, we're not renew our lease with them for a variety of reasons. So I don't think I need to go into that right now. You can ask Scott Baker or myself later. And what we wanted to do is not focus on the TRT, our 2%, as far as the county was concerned. Our focus is why do we get the 2%? Why does Parks and Rec get 2% of the TRT or the TLT? Does anybody know?
Well, I guess it do with what we've been talking about here.
But why do, why was that 2%? Where's the history of that? Why are we getting it?
Well, maybe somebody ought to define the 2% because I keep hearing 55%, 21%.
So we have a dedicated 2% out of the 8%. And it's dedicated to the Parks and Rec district?
Okay. It's not 2% of the $1 million. It's, it's two of the eight, which is 1/4.
Yes. $340,000 is what we got last year. So I'm, I'm asking the council members, why does the Parks and Rec get that 2%? Is it just?
Why don't you just tell us the answer, Annette?
It was to make, pay for the water when the city started charging for water.
We're paying for the water. So is, if you ask for the other cities in Oregon, is it best practices for city to charge Parks and Rec districts for their water? Hood River doesn't charge their Parks and Rec district for water. So best practices, I don't know if it's a good practice to charge Parks and Rec the same amount I get at my house. Okay. Because when the meters went in, that's when we had to start paying a lot of transfer, had to pay a lot of large water bill. So the answer to that was to dedicate 2% to the Parks and Rec so we could water the fields. And when the Parks and Rec district was formed, Kramer Field was not part of our 68 cents per thousand. Neither was Riverfront Park. Neither is Clint Cove. So 68, 68 cents per thousand, that hasn't changed. But we kept having to water and take care of other property. Right? So, I mean, that's kind of the reason behind that 2%. I just find it, you know, I find it really frustrating that the special district, that we have a really, you know, not a huge budget, 2.9 million. And, you know, we're trying to do, take care of a swimming pool. I don't know if anybody noticed, but there weren't any trees at Sarosis Park the last few years. And the county and the city were generous and gave us money to redo that. But we're going to have a new play park up there in a few months. Nobody in here had to give any money to that play park because tourists help fund, they're helping fund our parks in the Dells. So that 2% helps Scott Baker write grants so we can get matching funds. There's going to be an $800,000 play park at Sarosis Park. The money came from matching funds, system development charges, and a little bit of extra we get from transit room tax. So, you know, I wasn't super prepared to do this talk. I mean, I got all my little papers and I've talked to all the board member or the council members. And just like I said, I mean, I'm advocating for parks. I don't know what's going to happen. What happens if staff decides that the deliverables for Parks and Rec, we're not providing the correct deliverables? So when I talked to Mr. Klebs, he said that we have to show deliverables in order to get some money from the city. So then who decides that? The city council, Mr. Klebs? I don't know who decides it. So what about if everybody leaves? Nobody runs for city council again and you decide to get a different job, Mr. Klebs, somebody, someplace else? Then who's going to determine the deliverables that the park district's going to deliver to the city?
Under the ordinance, it would be the budget committee and the city council. They would have the final decision.
But what if everybody changes and nobody thinks Parks is important anymore?
It won't matter. Well, then you don't, if you don't like it, you don't elect those people to the city council.
Yeah. Well, that's it. Everybody's voted in for the city council. So anyway, that's, I don't know if anybody has any more questions for me. I'm happy to answer them. I'm happy to answer the questions outside of here. You know, I, I know my presentation wasn't probably as smooth as I could have made it. I mean, I just wasn't really that prepared to talk. But I've talked to every person in here almost, so I feel like I've.
Almost, but not all.
I tried, but you never returned my email.
Well, you didn't talk to me either, but I did talk to.
But I, but Rachel talked to you.
Right, she did. I would suggest, I'm not going to speak for the city manager, but when you, you use the term deliverables, I would suggest that that means the same thing as what we require of any organization that receives money from the city. And whether that the county is going to, if the county is a recipient of any TRT money, they will have to require, or we will require deliverables of them. And I would suggest then that one of the deliverables might be a documentation as the expenses that are incurred by either the park district, the county or the Little League about keeping the fields up to the level and, and to the quality that we would expect to be able to attract tournaments.
And then another comment that was made tonight was you're going to have some water, you know, restructuring some of the water. I don't, we don't know what that means for us. Is our bill going to go up?
Yes. Well, I, I don't know about the park district bill, but I can tell you that the, we have about $175 million of improvements that have to be made to the city's water system. Not the least of which is the, the water plant that, that manufactures the water to take into the city, the water lines that carry that water into the city and the dam. And yes, it's not going to be cheap. That, that's not really directly related to the issue we're talking about, but.
We don't know what our water bill is going to be. You just said it.
Right. Yeah. Well, I'm, nobody, nobody's sitting here right now knows what your water bill is going to be until we.
But we know we're going to be assured 2%. And then, you know, we don't have to bother anybody. So we don't have to go out for a bond. We don't have to ask the public for a bond. Not that we, we get our 2% and we, we do our work. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Any, any other questions for Ms. Byers? Thank you very much.
This, this counselor along. So I, I can only see Annette right now, I can't see the counselors or the city manager, but, oh, thank you. I just feel like, I mean, I had a conversation with Annette and I, I feel like somehow there's still a missing piece, even though it's been said in several different ways. Like we still aren't communicating to one another that taking the 2% out of the ordinance does not mean taking the 2% away from Parks and Rec. It means taking it out of the ordinance. And it, and that the budgeting process is going to be separate and that we will have contracts that can be long-term. And as the city manager said, that the, the language can be put in there. And I think we've always been good partners with Parks and Rec and the other partners. So I just want to encourage everybody to, to, you know, take a breath. No one's trying to pull anything over on anybody. We're just cleaning things up. And we still support our parks and we know it's good for the city, but we're just not going to have that in the ordinance because it isn't best practice.
So you're creating more bureaucracy because then we have to come and ask you for everything that we do. So we're bored, we're all elected officials. And now I have to come or we have to come and ask for what we need our money for. So that just creates a whole nother layer of bureaucracy. And then how are we supposed to budget? When we do our budget, you during your budget. So how?
Because what I just said, Annette, which is a long-term, multi-year agreement written out, no one is saying you're going to go, I mean, are you even hearing what I'm saying? I'm sorry, I've been up since 3:00 AM your time.
I know. I mean, DC. I am hearing it. And I've put a lot of time and effort into this. And I'm still confused about the term best practices. It was just talked about and we can't determine it is best practices according to the Oregon, you know, cities, city league, or is it a legal term? I know what it is in teaching.
We're talking about best practices for writing ordinances. We're not talking about best practices for how much money to give you. That's a totally different subject. And no one is trying to change anything on that right now. And I don't know, even know that anybody will.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Rachel Carter and I'm on the Parks Board. First of all, I'd like to say thank you guys for having us out here and I appreciate all the work you do for our city. Um, I do have to say that it is a big deal when you're a part of a board that our overall budget for the year is 2.9 million. And we're looking at, I mean, realistically, we're saying that we have a potential to lose. Uh, I think last year we said, what, $367,000 was brought in through TRT. So of course we're doing our due diligence to make sure that these funds, we are, want to come before you and tell you how important they are to our Parks District. And I've been on the board for three years and in that time, I have to say that, um, I've worked with Scott. He's a great Parks Director. Our parks are in really great condition and the trajectory of them is going up. We are doing great projects. They are, they look good. We're building, um, tree top. We did, um, a gazebo. Like we're excited about the projects that we're doing. So, um, not saying that we feel like you guys want to strip those funds from us, but we just want to be a voice that says that this is important to us and we need to be good community partners. And I do recognize that working as a whole is important too. But it does sound somewhat vague when we talk about making a list of deliverables. We don't know what that looks like because like we said, we have had this 2% since the beginning. And, uh, what, what does that look like for us if it's done in a different way? Because like we said, that is a large portion of our, our funding. And, um, we just feel like we need to put our voice out there to tell you that this is important to us. And, um, we would like to work with you in the forward to make, in the future, to make sure that it works on all sides.
I have a question. I don't know if you know, know the answer, maybe. I have a copy of your budget here in front of me. And under materials and services, there's a line item called utilities, water and sewer. And it's $152,000. How much of that is, goes toward the water that we've been talking about?
I, that's our, is that our overall water bill, Scott?
Oh, the entire water and sewer line item goes to the city? 152,000. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So that is also a big variable that we're concerned about in the future. Uh, water is something that we use a lot of. So we don't quite know what, where that's going to lie in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Would you like to say a few words? Well, I, I did have a couple of questions, but. Well, this is a reference to the letter Mrs., Ms. Kelly wrote. Do you have a copy of that?
Uh, yeah, I did see a copy of that.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay. And what sort of expenses do you think that the county and/or the little league will incur beyond what is normal?
Sure.
To accommodate out of town people coming into town, uh, because of tournaments?
So I think the question is more around the maintenance and operation of the field. Is more around the maintenance and operation of the field than it is just out of town tournaments or those kinds of things. And so, um, to answer your question, our budget this year is $305,000 to be able to, maintain and operate the facility. Obviously that number also includes some capital upgrades. A lot of deferred maintenance that needs to be done on that facility. So that's what we're endeavoring to do. We've got a great partnership with all the users out there, Little League, uh, in particular, and we've got some, some big plans. So, uh, we need some portable, uh, outfield fencing. Uh, we need to do redo two of the fields that are currently, um, not in use. And so prep for softball, uh, as well. So.
Did you describe some of the improvements you've already made and maybe, uh, short-term plans for the future? Especially in regards to the, the softball fields, for example, that kind of thing.
Yeah. So, um, I think we started out, um, partnering with Little League out there for the field cleanup days. Um, and we wish I had that list in front of me, but we took, um, significant amounts of, of soil out and replaced it with, uh, new soil. We did all the edging around all the fields. Uh, we put in a weed and pest management program and a fertilization program. If you've been by the facility, you can tell, um, it's nice and green. So, um, Patrick, what am, what else am I missing?
Security enhancements made to the fencing, around the fencing, around the property. It was quite dilapidated. So.
There was, um, a number of repairs made to the fencing in the facility. Um, there's a number of repairs that were made to the actual grounds. We had a rodent problem. You can imagine baseball and rodents don't go well together. We had, uh, a goat head problem. The baseball would bounce through the infield and pick up a bunch of goat heads. And so the, 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 the work that's been done has just been done to get it to the playable level. And it's a lot of just, uh, small maintenance projects. There was a lot of, uh, the, the fields weren't in the condition to be playable. So we brought in a lot of, uh, what we call turfus, which is turf material that blends well with the soil so that you actually have a field that is baseball playable, but also absorbs water well. And one thing I want to mention is Little League is chartering softball. So we are bringing in softball into the Little League organization. So we're going to be playing softball games down at Kramer Park. And this is one of the big reasons why Little League is supporting, uh, you know, the maintenance and development of the park is we're expanding what we're doing down at the park as an organization, but.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll also add, as you're talking about that, I'm thinking about things. And so we brought, we purchased two, uh, portable pitching mounds so that, um, different, uh, age groups can play on, on those fields. Um, and then we're not, we've never been in the park and rec business. And so there was a huge, uh, capital upside to be able to get ourselves into a position to do that. So, uh, two zero-turn mowers, uh, a tractor, um, quite a bit of small equipment, uh, to be able to, to even start to maintain these fields. So.
And we had several in-kind donations from local businesses, um, throughout the, throughout this process that we're partnering with the county and Little League.
Yeah. I want to emphasize as far as I'm concerned, I don't have a vote, but, um, my bachelor's degree is in Parks and Recreation. The people at the park district know that I have a soft spot in my heart for park districts and park services. And it, it pains me to see the, uh, the controversy that's surrounded this issue. And it's my understanding that the city manager invited the Parks Director and, and the county administrator to get together and try to resolve this and compromise. And I, I suppose that that, that invitation didn't work, work out or didn't result in anything meaningful.
Well, we did have a, a conversation at, at your request. And, you know, we asked for some dollars that are just not doable for the Parks District currently. But I think that's kind of sidestepping the issue because the request is really in to the city around these TRT dollars and the city is the administrator of those.
But sorry, what is the request? What are you actually asking for us to do?
Yeah. So, um, do you have that February letter?
Was it 185?
I think so. I think so. So you received a letter back in February with, with the county's request and also a list of all of the needed capital projects, uh, that we came together with Little League and Babe Ruth to, uh, put together that list. And so, uh, that's, that's what we're working off of to be able to address out there at that facility.
And I want to make something clear to the council. We're not trying to make Kramer Park, you know, the gem of the Northwest in terms of a baseball park. We're simply just trying to make it viable until another park becomes, uh, uh, the plan. Right now it's, it's, it's had its trouble. And from our perspective, we're just like, can we, can we get it to a point where it's playable year to year? And can we create a plan that, that makes it playable year to year? And doesn't put all of that maintenance and ownership back onto the little league? Cause the leagues can't afford that, right? We're volunteer leagues and so forth. But we're looking at something that is really just to get it up and playable, maintain that. We're not looking to make a capital improvement and make this the best ballpark in the Northwest. Although I love baseball and I'd love to do that.
I don't see there's anything wrong with that either. So missed my opinion. Okay. Anybody else?
I think the only other thing I'd like to mention is, is again, the focus tonight is, is on, on the ordinance itself. And again, the recommendation from myself and, and having the ordinance focus on the levying and collection of TRT or TLT. You know, we'll have various funding decisions and discussions with the county and with Parks and Rec and with a whole host of other organizations, uh, that, uh, utilize TLT funding, both on the required side of the category, uh, most notably with our contract with the Chamber of Commerce. But also on, on the other side of the TRT funding and the city's general fund when it comes to supporting different endeavors like this. And so, um, the general fund, as, as many people know, has a lot of, um, competing needs and whatnot, but it's, it's not, you know, it's not necessarily a zero-sum game and, and limited to these, uh, conversations. And, uh, but allowing and having the space for those conversations to happen as part of the budget process and through that allocation is what we're looking at and recommending.
County would support those changes as written.
Any more discussion or questions?
I just, I just say I'm very proud of our, our parks and what Parks and Rec's, uh, done over the years and whatnot. And I've been a board member of different organizations that dealt with parks, Little League primarily, at different times. And so as I said at the beginning of the meeting, right, right near the end, the budget process is, is open to agencies to come and present their case. And I don't see anything wrong with that. It gives the opportunity, rather than having a blanket mandatory payment being made, an opportunity for us to, to have presented to the council, the, the expenses and budgeting of the agency that's asking for the funds. And that's a helpful thing. That's a positive thing, in my opinion. And it helps the entire county and city and Parks and Rec, Chamber of Commerce presents their budget every year with all the details within it. And I think that's a good thing. It's, uh, it's a paragraph that starts with transparency. And, um, you know, I don't see anything wrong with this. And I know that as a budget committee member as well, I look favorably on things that, you know, improve our community and our parks is a big hunk of that. So I thank you for your work and your time. And, uh, this should not be a negative thing at all, really. I really don't see that happening. Cause we're looking to do the best things with that money that comes into TRT that we can possibly do. And, uh, in my six years, I've seen time and again where people have come in with requests and they've been approved, or maybe they've been adjusted a little bit, but always for the positive needs of the community. So thank you.
I, I appreciate the, uh, volunteers that have come forward to end your service to the community. Did you have anything you wanted to say? Sure.
One quick question, if I may. Well, Scott readies himself there. Can a specific project be funded, uh, out of TRT monies through the Tourism Promotion Fund? Can we fund the park through the 55% or does it have to come out of our general fund?
The one thing that I would do is we look at the specific definitions that the state has for the eligible uses for the Tourism Promotion Fund side of that. Um, one component of that is convention centers, conference centers and visitor information centers. And associated with those, uh, real property that has a lifespan, I think of 10 years. And so, you know, that, those definitions and those eligible uses is what we use to vet different proposals.
Wait, it's okay. No, let me, let me push on this. Are you saying, Jonathan, please weigh in. Are you saying potentially we could fund something with grass and trees, some definition of park, playing field or otherwise? Out of our tourism, out of that 55% that is now mandated by the state to go to tourism promotion?
And I can certainly let Jonathan.
I'm asking, is, is that a?
I'm itching to do it.
Because right now we've, we've heard, we've got to spend 55% at least on general tourism promotion. And we do, 45% goes to the general fund and we, we keep three quarters of it and one quarter goes to parks out of that, as has been since time immemorial, apparently.
37 years.
A long time. Are we saying there's another way to be looking at how we're funding partners or entities with TRT?
So for example, again, the, the definitions that I distributed at the meeting a while ago mentions, tourist centers, conventions, visitor centers, convention centers and conference centers.
Very specific.
And associated real property with those uses.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Attorney?
Sure. Um, I would say that tourism is, it's defined by state law and there are some, there's some guidance connected with it. And Matthews hit on nearly all of them. One of the defining characteristics is, um, the ability to draw in people from over 50 miles away or draw in people for overnight stays. And that's kind of the connection that you might find with short-term rentals and, and transient lodging at hotels and things of that nature is sort of, um, it's to offset some of the impacts associated with having, um, for lack of a better term, out of towners come into your town, right? That's the idea behind the tax at the state level. And so, um, if the question then is, well, that's tourism. So if we have to spend tourism dollars on tourism, is your question whether we could spend tourism dollars on, uh, green grass and park-related activities? Certainly. Currently, as of today in our code, that money that is earmarked for the Parks District is the, the, the 2% of the 8% or right, the 370.
Comes out of our general fund.
It comes out of the general fund. Yeah. And it doesn't count, it doesn't count. Yeah. It doesn't count towards tourism because the coordinate specifically says it's for operational purposes. And so operational purposes for a Parks District, I don't care if you're bringing people internationally. That kind of cost is not covered. It's not considered tourism, in my opinion. Um, I don't think that there's any law that would support that being considered tourism in the state of Oregon. Certainly the money could be allocated to the Parks District. And this is probably, you know, like, uh, the way I would draft this for a funding agreement, um, for, for tourism-related reasons. And, um, then it could come out of the money allocated towards tourism. But, uh, absent that hook into tourism, again, as I defined it and as Matthew described it, it would come out of the smaller percentage available for the general fund.
People in the audience may have heard several references to the city's general fund and that is the fund that supports the bulk of the city's day-to-day operations, including 100% of the police department and other, and, uh, we have a lot of latitude as to what we can use that money for. Mr. Baker?
Yeah. So I just wanted to, uh, first of all, Scott Baker, Executive Director of Northern Wasco County Parks and Recreation District. Thanks for providing this opportunity for us all to come and speak to you to answer, uh, Counselor Richardson's question. Transient lodging taxes can and do fund park and recreation districts throughout the state. It is in the ORS definitions. Um, it's actually 9B tourist-related facilities. Matthew was kind of alluding to it for any property that is a lifespan of more than 10 years. We have been actually providing tourist-related facility since we began this 2%. And so that's part of, you can say that it's coming out of your general fund, but it has been earmarked for park and recreation operations since the tax was raised from 6% to 8% for that purpose. You spoke earlier about, well, can't we just raise it from 8% to 10%? And yes, since 2003, there's been a moratorium, there's been a change in the way things do, way things can be done. But that's exactly what happened when the, this body raised it from 6% to 8%. It is unusual to have in an ordinance, an entity-specific allocation. I think the people who sat around here at the time did that very specifically and very thoughtfully. Because when they raised the transient room tax from 6%, which it was began in 1977, to 8%, specifically for parks and recreation, they wanted that in the ordinance. They wanted that in the law so that it didn't just get absorbed, wasn't at the whim of future councils and was specifically earmarked for that specific purpose. It's unusual, but that's the history of it. It's unusual, but that's the history of it. And so, yeah, we could go 8% to 10%, 10% to 12%, you know? And that would solve a lot of the problems. And it would be in keeping in line with the, some of the things with the state. But a higher percentage would have to go to tourism related facilities, 70%. However, Parks and Rec and Kramer Field both meet those criteria. So it can come out of that 70%. And that's a, that's a choice for y'all to make. But I just think that it was important for, to hear the history because the city has always been thinking about it. If they have 6%, the state gets one and a half and Parks and Rec gets 2%. And in fact, changing rewriting this ordinance doesn't eliminate entity specific allocations. We still, you still collect on behalf of the state, one and a half percent. So it doesn't really eliminate that. It just, what it does is, is it does change the tax rate going into the city. Though you said earlier that it doesn't change the tax rate. And that's true. It doesn't change the tax rate that a person who walks into a Holiday Inn pays. But it does change the tax rate that goes from Parks and Rec to the city. Doesn't change the overall collected, but it does change the allocation, taking it from Parks and Recreation where it was earmarked for and moving it into the city. It's a distinction that I think matters. You know, and 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 councils come and go and they change. But I think that there is something to be said for honoring the spirit that this was originally raised from 6% to 2% and keeping it in the code. I have the pleasure of working for a really dedicated group of elected officials. And they take long term planning very seriously. Right out the gate, when I started here, we did the district's first capital facilities master plan. I know what grants I'm writing in 2028 as I sit here. We, good park planning takes a horizon line that is 10, 20 years out. Because Mayor Mays knows. Even with, as Darcy said, doing multi-year agreements, that doesn't align with the long term planning that the Park District needs to do, that we're able to do by having a known source of funding coming in multiple years, 10 years at a time, not on the whims of who is elected or who sits in the seat, but who may very desperately want a pickleball court and makes that the deliverable and changes the direction that the elected officials who run the Park District operate in because of pet projects of other folks, just picking on you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Seems like that's happening a lot tonight.
Anyway, with that, I'll take any questions.
Did you sit, were you suggesting that the reason we raised the rate from 6 to 8% was for the Park District?
Absolutely, that's the history of that change.
The current ordinance reads, the increase was to fund repayment on the loan for the Union Street underpass project and for the Parks District.
Okay, so both.
And and the ordinance reads that once the underpass was repaid, that that two, that percentage then goes to the Park District. So, short term, pay off the underpart, long term, support the Park District.
Wasn't here, it's before my time, correct.
Okay, so after that was paid off and essentially the Park District received those funds that were currently going to pay off the underpass went to the Park District instead.
And that's written into the current ordinance, correct? And that part could be removed.
Yeah, and maybe that's why your your water bill's 152,000 and you're getting 347,000 from the city.
Yes, there was an, there was an understanding that at the time that the Park District was created, that its tax rate was insufficient to keep up with the maintenance of the parks. Other things have happened since then. Certainly, we've taken on more acreage, right? So we've got the same amount of butter, more toast, just gets spread thinner and thinner as we take on more parks. Our water bill goes up because we've got more acres under irrigation than we ever have. But those would all keep, keep pace. But in our voters' infinite wisdom, they decided to cap property tax without a way to cap inflation. So, you know, we find ourselves in, like a lot of small districts, struggling with those lines that are going to intersect and we don't know what they're going to do. Certainly, the data centers has helped and we have light coming. We have some help coming. We also have big plans for that because we don't want to just get by. We want to thrive.
Well, I think, I think we all want to see the park district thrive. And I think the Google data centers, the one that's online now is, by my calculations, is bringing in an additional $300,000 for the Park District.
Yeah.
And you, the community service fee and the property taxes out of the new data centers are something the county is going to, the city and the Park District are all going to benefit from. So we're looking forward to that. And I for one, would love to see wonderful parks. And I think you guys have done a terrific job with Serosus Park, so.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, yeah. So I appreciate the staff. I don't want to be really cold in this. I appreciate our city manager and our city attorney reviewing the various systems and processes of our city in the last couple of years pretty thoroughly. We just approved the new city council rules after a lot of work on your part. So I appreciate that. And I, I hear you loud and clear that to your perspective, what you'd like us to do is clean up an outdated ordinance. But it's perhaps a bigger can that you've taken the lid off than just that. There's a lot of worms inside. And I would, don't think it's appropriate for us to be negotiating with various entities from, from DAS. I think that it would be really helpful for you to do a little more homework on what that 55% could actually be used for and give us some options and address some of the requests and give us several options going forward that we could at least frame a second conversation around.
So the, you're, you're asking for like potential uses of the 55% and the 45% effectively? I mean, that's effectively what the budget process is for annually.
Yes, and Counselor Runyon has made the point that other entities come to the city and ask for, for money, which is undeniably true. I've sat on budget five years. Yes, I take that, I take that point. However, those tend to be one off asks and then much, much smaller dollar amounts. We're talking orders of magnitude less and it's sort of not really a straight comparison with structural dollars and the volume of money that TRT has sent to parks over the last number of years.
So just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, if I might just ask a follow up for Counselor Richardson. Are you looking for like the potential possible definitions of what could be considered to be tourist related or otherwise qualifying for the use of the spending of tourism dollars under the state of Oregon? Is that you're looking for like a list of possible ways to spend that money in theory?
With relation to parks and park like facilities.
That's the narrow focus?
Yeah.
How about I get you everything and then we also include that part of it?
As you like.
Okay.
I think the only other thing I would add there is certainly in the the city's council fund or budget, there's a number of items that are one offs or one time in nature. We've also funded several things on a recurring basis. And then for things such as the fireworks, for example.
Well, again, it's such a much, it's such a small amount.
Correct.
By comparison, it's, it's not apples to oranges. It's like.
Correct.
And lots of something.
And oftentimes, things that are of larger dollar value are more formally in the budget. Not, I shouldn't say more formally in the budget, but are in different places in the city's budget, for example, that are longer term in nature and those higher values, such as the, the contract that we have with the Chamber of Commerce for Tourism Services is, has been going on for a number of years and is at higher dollar value. In addition to other IGAs and different funding agreements that we have that oftentimes when they are that higher dollar value or more long in term in nature, find a place more permanently in one of the specific departments or funds that we have most related to that use. And that's, that's been a little bit of the bifurcation between the city council's budget fund and some of the funding requests that are in there and the longer term ones with the higher dollar value.
Any more discussion about this or questions? With that, thank you all very much for coming. And does anybody have anything else they'd like to raise for the city council before we adjourn?
What do you want us to do? And so included in your packet was a red line of the ordinance. Are there any other comments on, do you want us to, do you want us to bring this back for an action? Additional discussion? Anything that in particular you agree with or you don't want us to include? A little bit of guidance on that area would be helpful as a discussion item.
And frankly, if the guidance is, you know, of the eight things that are recommended by staff, seven are of no consequence to council and you guys are fine with it, that's fine.
Great.
And if you want us to dig in a little bit deeper onto number four, connected with these project and entity specific expenditures, that would be helpful context as well.
Well, speaking for myself, yes. Seven of the eight make a lot of sense. Item four, I want to see some, some additional discussion. And it may not be, let's put this in the ordinance. But if there are immediate obvious ramifications with a lot of money that affect a lot of our neighbors and other entities, I want to be able to see what those are and how we're going to address them and not say, we'll get to it, which is kind of the position we're in right now. Like, clean up the ordinance, we'll deal with the ramifications later.
Well, and I think a component of that, you know, is, is if we were to make these changes to the ordinance, we wouldn't be seeking to have those changes be effective in this budget year. And that would allow the upcoming budget process to answer some of those questions and to go through that process and the work leading up to it. If that, if that helps in terms of immediate impacts.
I'd rather have a multi-year long, sort of a longer term framework, personally.
And certainly, that, that can be that work and discussion that comes forward. And, you know, having, having staff come back with those types of funding agreements over a multi-year period to be included in the upcoming budget process just to assuage any concerns that, you know, some funding allocation is going to go from one place to another with the adoption of this ordinance, right? The focus right here is on the ordinance itself. And again, from staff's perspective, the levying and collection of the TLT.
Just wanted to mention, Matthew, do we have any other timelines that we need to be mindful of connected with this adoption or potential adoption?
Thank you, Jonathan. So as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, there were a number of reasons to undertake this effort. And one of them is associated with the contract for tourism services that we have. And so we're keeping an eye on that clock there and do have a deadline of that contract ending on June 30th of next year. We want to make sure that we are endeavoring to make sure that there is sufficient time to go through a procurement process. This ordinance as the kind of foundational document for some of that is, is part of that work. And so our interest again was to bring this back to council as, as, as an action item for the ordinance itself, to quickly be followed up with a procurement process for those tourism services. If we delay a little bit on the, the ordinance, there may be some impacts to that timeline. And so we'd have to evaluate potential, potential options to make sure that we have something in place for the budget process next year and then July 1.
So I, I, I appreciate Counselor Richardson, your, your thoughts on this. I would love to hear a majority of the council's opinion on that same issue. Otherwise, I think staff's intent is to still bring this back as an action item with that included unless a majority of council does not want us to.
Mayor Mays?
Yes.
I'm in fair favor of bringing the proposed revision back as an action item for a council adoption. I'm, I'm prepared to move forward on this.
And deal with funding, not funding, following through on their requests as a separate thing down the road somewhere.
Down the road is, I think it should be a part of the budgetary process and discussed along those lines.
Any objection to Ms. Counselor McLaughlin's suggestion?
No, I'm in favor.
I'm also in favor. And I think that, you know, I don't know what council wants to do, but I have no problem saying that for this budget cycle, that we keep the parks at the 2%. I just don't want it in the ordinance because I have no intention of stripping away money from parks at this point. And I feel like that's their fear. And so if they have some reassurances, that's not what we're doing. But we do need to transition as soon as possible to an even budget process. And, you know, maybe using the words deliverables is what's harsh or confusing to them. So there's probably better language we could use. But I haven't heard anybody on council or any staff people that I've talked to say that any, this has anything to do with reducing the amount of money going to parks.
And I'm not in favor of reducing any money. I just want the ability to look at making sure that we're spending money in the future appropriately.
Okay.
Well, I disagree with you respectfully, all, or at least you three. I feel like we're rushing into a fundamental change in the way we have baited in funding parks. And that doesn't mean just because something's been done a long time, doesn't mean we have to do it forever. But I do think it means we take our time and do it thoughtfully.
Oh, of course that.
But you haven't, you haven't offered any follow up. You've just said, we'll get to it. Don't worry about it. We'll get to it. That's, that's, that's the answer here.
I said.
It was in the budget process.
I, I'm in favor of putting it in the budget process. In the next cycle, what request do we have for money to appropriate some of the expenditures? Has there been anything from the county to reimburse them for the additional amounts? Is that a request?
So, I mean, we, we received a letter from the county requesting funding assistance with Kramer Field.
All right, now I do, I wasn't aware. Now, we didn't have that discussed tonight.
Remember that.
We did bring that up earlier this evening as one of the reasons that prompted, one of the four reasons that prompted discussion on that.
I didn't catch that, all right.
Respectfully, respectfully, Tim, I've, I think it's been five budget cycles, at least five budget cycles that I've sat through. And I've had the pleasure of watching us around a table go round and round and round, spend over $10,000, give or take, for fireworks. And you're saying, let's put the $350,000 for parks into that same process. And I don't think that's wise. I think we need to have some long term understanding of the relationship between TRT and parks or any other entity that we, or object, a project that we choose to fund. And if that's a long term agreement, because that makes, that's, makes more sense than an ordinance, I could, I could be persuaded to that. But I want to see that almost as a package. I want to see the ordinance and an agreement very close together in, in time and in discussion and not, we'll get to it. I just don't think that's wise. Again, having seen the budgetary arguments, dig deep into very small amounts, I don't want to put another entity's, you know, significant chunk of their budget into that discussion. It's 12% if my mouth's right of their budget.
What I'm looking for is staff is hoping for council's input and on the direction to proceed with bringing the proposed revisions back as an action item for council adoption. That's what I'm in favor of doing.
So, so if I may, what I'm hearing is that there is an interest in moving forward on the, the ordinance and bringing it back to council in a timely manner. But I am also hearing that there is a desire to have these funding discussions with our partners ahead of the budget process. We do consider different funding requests, you know, mid-cycle or ahead of the actual budget cycle, especially on, on particular issues that then inform the budget process. And that's what I'm kind of hearing you say, Counselor Richardson, is you don't want to wait for that budget process just to see what happens. But potentially some additional council discussion and input to staff on what a funding agreement might look like ahead of the budget process.
Absolutely. And look, I've heard a bunch of other folks up here say, we love parks, we're going to fund them. We want great parks. Okay, but that means giving them some clarity too.
I'm not sure that the two of you disagree. I think Matthew just summed it up really well.
I agree.
And you mentioned these discussions, would that be at the staff level? With these, your counterparts?
Well, I mean, I guess what I would envision is that we would have dialogue and engagement with, with the partners that we've talked about. And we'd craft something that could be brought to council. Jonathan and I would connect our, connect and discuss what the most appropriate vehicle that may be as an, as an IGA or just a straight up funding agreement or something of that nature. And we could see what the output from that is and bring something back to council.
Then this would. That's reasonable to me.
Yeah. I mean, at some point, the dollars that everyone seems to be concerned about are going to have to be addressed specifically. And.
Yes.
So part of this process that you just described, my.
Help.
Well, help do that, okay. I got that.
And I'd like to see staff.
And I'd like to see staff lead that discussion or at least do the investigation.
Okay. Do you feel like you have sufficient direction, Mr. Klebs?
I. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Does everybody feel like we've given the staff sufficient direction? Okay. With that, anything else to come before the council? This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.